Clerk, please read the roll.
Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Shildroth?
Here.
Pogano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Hernandez?
Item number three, are there any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes of July 14, 2014? Seeing none, Mr. Hernandez moves to approve the minutes and is seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item number four, hearings from citizens. Again, if you wish to make comment, please complete a yellow speaker card on the table next to the chamber's entrance. Remember, this is not a answer and question, question-answer session. Ms. Rita Powers. Rita Powers.
Yes.
Come on forward, please, ma'am. And ma'am, if for the record, you'll state your name and your home address, I'd be appreciative.
I have a thyroid problem, so my voice is weak, so this is as loud as it's going to get. My name is Rita Powers. I live at 110 Seville Court.
Ms. Powers, could you actually hold the microphone up, we're not able to hear you?
Is this better?
That's a little bit better, yes.
Okay. I'm Rita Powers. I live at 110 Seville Court, Florissant, Missouri. You've seen me before. The last time was in April 2013. That's when you okayed the Walmart project going through. For weeks on end, since they started, whirling down the trees, it has been horrendous at my home. I invite each of you to come, listen, and hear. The noise is still going on. My body shakes usually, but now it shakes when the bing booms come. I am 71 years old. To have all this noise within feet of my home is horrendous. The trees came down and made the loudest noises and thumps. The heavy machinery have been working right in back of my house for weeks. That's where they put this big trench in. I mean, it's weeks and weeks with the big bulldozers right in my backyard. The sounds are horrendous. They are even putting in giant pipes. Go look at how big these pipes are, how close to my house they are. They're very, very close. It shakes my windows. How close are you allowed to come to a person's property without disturbing them? My windows shake. I talked to Jeff Otto several weeks ago. This is the man who stood on this floor and said, "We'll take care of that." And he said now, "Well, Walmart has declined to buy my property, and I am certain of how much more my nerves can take." When I talked to Jeff Otto, he said that the drop-off at the end of my street, and I invite each of you to come see it, because I've been here before, asking and asking and asking you to fix it, at the time you said it was Walmart's problem. Well, guess what? No longer Walmart's problem. Jeff Otto says it's Florissant's problem. They neglected it for years and years and years, and that's why the trench is there. So now, I invite you to pull in my driveway at night, back out of the driveway, and survive, because there is a 30-foot drop, and no one seems to care about it. My children, my grandchildren, come, they're five and under, we had to stand at the end of the driveway to make sure no one goes down by the guardrail and falls down 30 feet. Now, when is this going to be taken care of? I have been a citizen for 46 years. I lived in this house. Now Walmart comes in, and they just, they have destroyed it, I mean, completely. With the noise, with the way the whale is going, the water from up high on the streets runs through my backyard. Now, what did they do? They put big piles of dirt. Where is the water going to go? I think they are ruining my house. I have, oh, I have a picture on my phone of what happened last Thursday night. Come and see this. Last Thursday night, there's this water, maybe it's every touch upon, a black sheet is underneath it. It's so close, I could see it from my window. I mean, you could throw a stone and hit this thing. And there's rocks in it and water in it. And guess who else was playing by it? Three of your children of Florissant were playing in this area, in the rocks. I have a picture of them.
Ms. Powers, I'm sorry. I appreciate what you're telling me, but your three minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a picture of it, if you want to see it.
Thank you, ma'am. Going to need that.
This is for Florissant.
All right. Seeing none on the speaker cards, we'll move along to agenda item number five, communications. Clerk, please read the communications.
Letter dated July 18, 2014, from Charter Communications regarding the franchise report. Email dated July 20, 2014, from Tom Price regarding the July 14 council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item number six, public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one, 14-07-018.
Notice hereby given in accordance with Section 405.135 of the Florissant City Code, the zoning ordinance has amended that a public hearing will be held by the city council of the city in Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 rue Saint-François on Monday, July 28, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. on the following proposition: To issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 6266 and 6380 to allow for an adjustment to the site development plan and the parking count for the property located at 3180 North Highway 67. Citizens have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or OTDD 8395142.
Thank you. Gentlemen, for the record, would you please state your name and your address?
My name is Mark Doring. I'm president of Doring Engineering at 5030 Griffin Road, St. Louis, Missouri.
Corey Bronenkamp, 2649 Town Oaks Drive, St. Louis, Missouri.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed with your presentation.
Good evening. We're here to represent Lowes this evening for the proposed, proposed site plan revisions having to do with the parking calculations has been modified by the city recently. Matthew Minton was with us at the Planning Commission hearing. He's from Lowes. He is not here this evening. Corey Bronenkamp is from Elkin and Associates. They're the developers, the builders of the project of the Dollar Tree, which is adjoining our site. And I'm Mark Doring from Doring Engineering. This is the aerial picture of the entire Lowes parcel. And you can see that, let's see here, Lindbergh Boulevard's up here, and New Hall's Ferry is here. The black is the outline of the Lowes parcel. And right in this area right here is where we're proposing to have the new Dollar Tree that's already been approved in front of you here. So this is the Lowes boundary. And again, this is Dollar Tree in this area. We are proposing some lot renovations in this area here so we can have an access that runs between Dollar Tree and the Lowes here. Our vehicles will come in here into the, we'll have trucks that'll unload in this area here, as well as there'll be a cross-access for any cars carrying to go from our parcel into Lowes, from the Dollar Tree into Lowes. And again, we're requesting to the revision to the Lowes parking requirements to the current city standards. At the back part there, this is the back of the proposed Dollar Tree. We're going to enlarge that existing island, and we're going to remove eight parking spaces in this area, and we'll put a new island in there. Back up a second. So that'll, again, that'll tie our two parcels together. The original parking calculations for the city, 774 was required before, okay? And with the new parking spaces, with the reductions originally, they needed, they were able to reduce that 744 parking spaces down to 722 parking spaces. And we are now proposing, under the new parking ordinance that's been revised though, they only need 386 parking spaces. Substantial change from the 700 down to 386, okay? And we're still going to provide 701 parking spaces. So we still have plenty of parking spaces. We're only taking away a handful of parking spaces. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Mr. Hernandez.
Hi, Corey. I spoke to him before, to you, Corey, before. Now, if you can just mention to the individuals, the only change is because of the Dollar Tree development that you're doing for the parking. So with the Dollar Tree already approved, you're just waiting to just to recalculate the parking here in this area, and that's it, so you can proceed forward with that.
Yes, we're just removing eight parking spaces to allow the cross-access between the two parcels.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, if you had to explain that to them, and that's the start that we're looking at at this point. Thank you.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Please step forward.
Yes.
Sir, if you'd be so kind as to state your name, come on forward, and your address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Jeff DeSina, 4635 Whisper Lake Drive Apartment 10 Florissant, Missouri 63033. And, well, exactly, would there be only eight parking spaces removed from Lowes, or how exactly would that work?
I believe that's what the gentleman just told us, yes.
Yes, but how would people get into Dollar Tree?
One new gentleman want to answer that, please?
Okay, this area here is the existing entrance into Lowes off of New Hall Ferry. Okay. We'll have a curb cut into there from the existing Lowes entrance, okay? You can go into Dollar Tree here. And then again, we're removing eight parking spaces back here, so you can get to it from the Lowes parcel itself, as well as the existing Auto Tire entrance is right here. We're going to share that entrance with Auto Tire. You can come in that way there. So we actually have three entrances on the proposed Dollar Tree.
And would Lowes own the property, or?
No, Dollar Tree is going to own the property.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience would like to comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, Ms. Pogano moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two, 14-07-019.
In accordance with Section 405.310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the city council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 rue Saint-François on Monday, July 28, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Domino's Pizza and to amend the special use, to authorize an amendment to the special use permit number 4406 to allow for a carryout, delivery, and sit-down restaurant in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 2500 North Highway 67. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or OTDD 8395142.
Thank you. Is a petitioner present? Thank you, sir. Please step forward, and for the record, state your name and your address. Thank you.
First name's Gary Bajowski, Vice President for NBR Management, Domino's Pizza. My address is 1866 Summit View, St. Charles, Missouri 63303.
Thank you. You want to go ahead with your presentation, sir?
So basically, at the Domino's Pizza store, we've been there for over 30 years, and Domino's Corporate is making all the franchisees redo all their stores with this new reimage. And basically, we're trying to develop this new reimage into our store plan, and they're allowing for a few booths and just a few seats. And so we are just requesting to adjust the special use permit so we could allow seating. And we came in front of the board, I guess, planning and zoning, and they asked us that we would enclose the dumpster area and that also that our parking spots were in, aligned with what the amount of seats we were asking for. Basically, we're going to redo the whole inside of the store. It's going to be real modern. And our business is still carryout and delivery for the most part, but we're only adding just a few little tables and nothing major. And we think it's a great design, and we've been with the city for over 30 years now here in the same location, and I think we just need a facelift, so.
Thank you. How many seating, seats are you proposing to add?
Excuse me?
How many seats are you proposing to add?
Did they have the drawings at all? I know Ben, the office submitted like nine sets.
I've seen the drawings, I would just, for the benefit of the general public.
So there's like two booths and like six seats. And I'm going off the top of my head, because I don't have that drawing in front of me.
And what would the hours for sit-down be?
Our normal business hours, which would be 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That's what we allow carryouts.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
There's things ready to go, and it's just a minor change inside the small spaces you walk into the store to the left. You're going to add the additional two, three tables on the left side. So my understanding is that you're going to decrease the kitchen area just slightly, just to maybe be able to place those chairs and desks on the, on the left side of the store. So there's no exterior being modified or anything in the nature. So I'm talking to you, I guess it was, oh my God, what's her name?
Sharon.
Sharon, yes, Sharon. She mentioned all those details. So I, and with her request, I sent this, the other council members all an email regarding the fact that everything's ready to go and everything's just waiting for this approval, and being it the first store you're going to apply this to. So I've been requesting for the evening for to get three readings for you as well on this, to get the job going. But I think it's great. I think it'd be a good thing to do.
So basically, we are, you know, to answer your question about the size, we're not changing the structure. When it was a Kentucky Fried Chicken, it had a huge office, and we originally kept that. So that's all been redesigned with a real smaller, small office, so we can maximize the exposure for the, you know, the customer view, if that makes sense.
So this is the first of all, that stores are going to go through this process, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, Mr. Caputa moves to close the public hearing that's seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
One more question for the three readings? Do we have to do anything else, or is that?
I would stick around, sir. Item number seven on the agenda is old business. Bills for second reading. 90, Bill 9013, Mr. Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Total Tan Incorporated DBA Club Fitness to allow for the operation of a fitness center for the property located at 745 North Highway 67.
Mr. Jones moves for a third reading, and I will second that motion. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Total Tan Incorporated DBA Club Fitness to allow for the operation of a fitness center for the property located at 745 North Highway 67.
Prior to the final vote being taken, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
The motion carries, and Bill number 9013 becomes ordinance number 8063. Item number eight, new business, board appointments. Ms. Pogano.
Yes, thank you. I would like to appoint Reverend Edward Robinson to the Parks and Recreation Board, and thank him for volunteering.
Mr. Lee makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make the following appointments to the Traffic Commission, Jerry Whitehead from 1045 St. Brendan.
I'll make that motion, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
I'd also like to appoint Carol Edelman of 25 Eldorado to the Environmental Quality Commission.
Mr. Jones makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Bills for first reading. Bill 9016.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B5 ordinance number 6266 and 6380 to allow for an adjustment to the site development plan and parking count for the property located at 3180 North Highway 67.
Mr. Hernandez makes a motion for a second reading that is seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance amending B5 ordinance number 6266 as amended by ordinance number 6380 to allow for an adjustment to the site development plan and the parking count for the property located at 3180 North Highway 67.
Mr. Hernandez moves for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pogano. Roll call vote for the third reading, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Clerk, please read the bill again.
An ordinance amending B5 ordinance number 6266 as amended by ordinance number 6380 to allow for an adjustment to the site development plan and the parking count for the property located at 3180 North Highway 67.
Prior to the final vote being taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Motion carries. Bill number 9017 passes and becomes ordinance 8064. Bill 9018.
17.
We just did 17, didn't we?
No, we did 16.
Oh, I apologize. Bill 9017.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 4406 to NBR Management Corporation DBA Domino's Pizza to allow for a carryout, delivery, and sit-down restaurant in B3 zoning district for the property located at 2500 North Highway 67.
And Mr. Hernandez makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk?
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 4406 to NBR Management Corporation DBA Domino's Pizza to allow for the carryout, delivery, and sit-down restaurant in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 2500 North Highway 67.
Mr. Hernandez makes a motion for a third reading, and I will second that motion. A roll call vote, please, for the third reading.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Bill 9017 passes and becomes ordinance 8065. 8065. Now we'll go to Bill 9018.
Ordinance naming Pavilion 1 at Bangor Park, the Robert and Betty McLaughlin Pavilion.
Mr. Shildroth moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance naming Pavilion 1 at Bangor Park, the Robert and Betty McLaughlin Pavilion.
Is there a public comment on that?
In just a moment, Mr. DeSina, just one second, please. Mr. Shildroth moves for a third reading, and that's seconded by Mr. Caputa. Any discussion? Clerk, please, Mr. Shildroth, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom and Betty McLaughlin are the only, Bob, excuse me, Bob and Betty McLaughlin are the only husband and wife duo to serve the city of Florissant on the city council in cities history that I could find out. Betty McLaughlin was the first female member elected to the city council, later followed by her husband. Her husband passed away several years ago, and Betty is celebrating an upcoming birthday next month, and they served the city for many years, and I think this is appropriate and well-worthy to do this. Thank you.
Clerk, please poll the council for the third reading, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Prior to the final vote being taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? I'm sorry, go right ahead. I'm jumping the gun.
Ordinance naming Pavilion 1 at Bangor Park, the Robert and Betty McLaughlin Pavilion.
All right, yes, sir. For the record, please state your name and your address.
Jeff DeSina, 4635 Whisper Lake Drive Apartment 10 Florissant, Missouri 63033. I don't see why you have to name a pavilion after someone. I mean, I don't see what's wrong with just having, having the pavilions go by numbers, because it's, it's just more interesting if they're just generically called a pavilion. I mean, to think of... I mean, I don't see what's wrong with just having, having the pavilions go by numbers because it's just more interesting if they're just generically called a pavilion. I mean, to think of naming the pavilion after someone, I think it's unnecessary and I think it should be filibustered, and I want to know why you have to do it, why you can't honor these people in some other way like renaming a street after them, for example.
Thank you. Mr. Shildroff.
Mr. Tassina, I think I cited several good reasons why this pavilion should be named after them.
But I don't understand why you can't name a street after them instead.
Well, I just think a pavilion would be, would be better and more people are going to see it. They're going to be using our pavilion in our park, in our swimming pool at Bangard Park.
Will all the pavilions be named after someone or just?
No, sir.
Just the one at this time?
No, sir, I'm not proposing that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Tassina. Thank you, Mr. Shildroff. And I believe we should go ahead with the final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Bill 9018 passes and becomes ordinance 8066. 8066. Bill 9019.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $10,000 from the General Revenue Fund to budget account number 4050 Professional Services for the purpose of funding an outside independent salary survey of all positions within the city of Florissant.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you. After I had proposed this bill, I had sent it to the council, and I've spoken with Mr. Egan. I understand we're going to be having a council work session in the near future, so in order to be able to discuss this in some more detail, I'm going to move that we postpone a second reading until the August 25 meeting, till after a work session.
Mr. Lee has a motion on the floor that is seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor? Mr. Schmidt?
Well, just a procedural thing, you have to first put the bill on the floor. So you first have to move for a second for discussion to put the bill on the floor. Then you can move to postpone it.
Okay, then I'll move for a second.
The bill's not on the floor for discussion.
I'll move for a second for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee has made a motion to have a second reading for discussion purposes only. And is seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
There's no vote. You're not voting on the bill. All you did was put it on the floor. So now it's on the floor.
Right.
Now you can discuss it and you can do whatever you want.
Now that it's on the floor, now that it's back on the floor, I'm going to move that we postpone till August 25.
It is moved to postpone to August 25. I'm waiting for a second. Seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The bill is postponed till August 25. Bill 9020.
Ordinance amending Chapter 600, Article 10 Utility License Text of the Florissant City Code, Section 605327, gas companies, electric companies, and water companies, and 605330 telephone and telecommunication companies by reestablishing residential utility rate at 2, 5% in the city of Florissant.
Mr. Lee.
Move for a second for the purpose of discussion only.
Mr. Lee made a second for discussion purposes only, seconded by Mr. Hernandez.
And I would also like to now move that we postpone this until after that same work session, till the August 25 meeting.
Motion on the floor? Motion on the floor, seconded by, made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr., correction made by Mr. Lee, and seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The bill will be postponed. Bill 9021.
Ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $37,500 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to the forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of supplies and equipment for the police department.
I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $37,500 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of supplies and equipment for the police department.
Mr. Shildroff moves for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Clerk, go ahead. A roll call vote on the third reading, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance amending general fund budget to reflect $37,500 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to the forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of supplies and equipment for the police department.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this measure, is anyone in the audience interested in making comment on the bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Bill 9021 passes and becomes ordinance 8067. 8067. Item number nine, council announcements. Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Ms. President. I would just like to remind the residents, next Tuesday, August 5, is election day. There are very important amendments and proposition on the ballot, so please read the ballots, read the propositions, read the amendments, be informed, and know what you're voting on, and go out there and do your right as a citizen and cast your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henke's not here this evening. He was excused, so I'm going to make this announcement on his behalf. It's very difficult to be in the restaurant business these days, probably perhaps one of the most difficult businesses to be in, yet Cannoli's, which is located at Florissant Meadows, is celebrating their 20th anniversary of being opened this week. So I suggest you go down there and tell Tom and Laurie how much you've appreciated the fact over the years that they've served so many delicious meals and they've employed so many youngsters, gave many of the youngsters their first jobs. So that's all we've done at Cannoli's, and we give them congratulations on their 20th year in business. And also, the Florissant Walt Bear Association will have their golf tournament, and that is September 29 at the Golf Club of Florissant. If you need information, please contact Captain Bowden at the Police Department, 831-7000. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to say that we had a, we hosted a very successful CYC City-County Championship. We helped to host that at St. Ferdinand Park this past weekend, and I'd like to congratulate the runners-up. St. Sabina was runner-up in the fifth grade girls' division, and St. Angela was runner-up in the sixth grade open division. And congratulations to the seventh grade girls from Sacred Heart who won the championship in the closed division for the seventh grade, and also congratulations to the eighth grade girls from St. Angela who won the eighth grade open division. In the boys' baseball that was held in the South County region, St. Ferdinand won the fifth grade boys' midget open division. St., Sacred Heart won the 11th and 12th grade, wait, they won the seventh grade championship, and St. Rose won the 11th and 12th grade championship. So congratulations to those teams. Also, business leader Johnny Landoff and I will be on KTRS radio on Friday morning. We'll be discussing the Ferguson-Florissant School District Proposition S, and we ask everyone to go on either the Ferguson-Florissant website or the Florissant website to find out the informational website to find the information on Proposition S and why it's being put forth by the Ferguson-Florissant School District. Mr. Landoff has been a supporter of education for a long time, starting when his father started a scholarship 51 years ago for our local high school students. Landoff Chevrolet has been very supportive of education. He was quoted as such in his quote, and I have a quote that "The vitality of the Ferguson-Florissant School District is essential to the progress not only of the city of Florissant and our important area of St. Louis County. Support for public education is a cornerstone of every successful community. Residents have consistently taken responsibility for the welfare of our children and given our schools the resources that they need in order to prepare the good citizens of tomorrow." This may surprise a few people in town, maybe a few people in the Deas, but I have declared August to be Florissant City Council Appreciation Month. As the city dedicates plaques to honor former city and county council member Don Bond and former councilman and the state rep Dave Reynolds in the month of August. We're going to honor Dave Reynolds on August 12 at noon in conjunction with a Rotary meeting, and we're going to honor Don Bond on August 27, right at the beginning of the Wednesday Night Out that evening. And then the council just passed a ordinance to name a pavilion after Robert and Betty McLaughlin, two former council members. So if you see one of your council members or one of your former council members who served on the Florissant City Council, if you see them out in public, thank them for their service. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your service. Wednesday, we have a Wednesday Night Out on the 30th of July. It's going to be at the Shrine, and we're going to have the movie Frozen. I got it wrong at the concert a couple times, but I got it right last week. And we're going to have an ice cream social down at the Shrine. It's going to be a lot of fun, so bring the family down to the Shrine on Wednesday night. And then Florissant Police want to remind you that we have National Night Out on Tuesday, August 5, a week from tomorrow. We're still looking for a few more hosts for block parties for that night. Get out, mingle with your neighbors. If you can't have a block party, at least spend some time out on your front porch instead of your back porch so that you can try to mingle with your neighbors, get to maybe introduce yourself to a neighbor that you haven't met yet. And then Dog Days of Summer, August 15 and 16 at Coke Park. Bring the dog up to Coke Aquatic Center and have a great time. And if you don't have a dog, come up anyway because it is great to watch them. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be August 11, 2014. Mr. Lee moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? The council will stand adjourned.